All right, the streaming is on.
Port of order. Village religious to the flag, United States of America, into the public, which stands one nation, and I don't have the individual, the community, just as well.
Can we give a roll call? Chairman Zafar?
Here.
Member Berger?
Here.
Member Sinemitz?
Yeah.
Member Shulitz?
Here.
And number, no.
Here.
Okay, we're ready to go to number five, the two public hearing.
Okay, continued public hearing on the application of Yeshiva Dr. Emuna Benos Bina for proposed site plan to establish new school of religious instruction known as Benos Bina located at fifty-one Church Road, requiring variances. Application requested an adjournment to Thursday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-five, G D A.
And that is per the attached memo from attorney general manual dated August sixth.
Okay, public hearing on the application-
Oh, I need a motion.
Nope.
Uh, I'll second the motion.
All right, I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, the motion was to, uh-
General Chair.
The applicant's request for adjournment, uh, in the matter of Yeshiva Dr. K and then, uh, Benos Bina, uh, to Thursday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-five, at ten o'clock, better twelve, eight o'clock.
Okay, public hearing on the application of Shulam Shik, two forty-five Cherry Lane, for the site plan approval to establish a freestanding place of worship which will meet the younger ten thousand square feet, requiring variances. The property has a lot area of fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and one square feet. It is improved with a single-family dwelling and two-story garage. Freestanding places of worship under ten thousand square feet are permitted as of right in the R forty zoning district. A variance is being requested from Article three, two ten dash fifteen, Attention Five, Table Two, R forty, bulk requirements of the residential district, bulk requirements of Aeron Zone codes as follows. Uh, Mrs. Zafir says that there's another variance that's required, so-
Maximum development.
The maximum development coverage of twenty percent.
Allowed, required.
Required, and thirty percent is provided. Okay, variances for the front yard, fifty feet required, thirty, five point seven feet proposed. The property is located on the west side of Cherry Lane, approximately zero feet north of Blossom Road. The lot is designated as section fifty-six point three-two, block one, block thirty-seven of the Tyler Land Pro Tax Matt. The property is located in the R forty zoning district and is comprised of one point three oh two acres. The address is two forty-five Cherry Lane, Anamont, New York, one zero nine zero one.
Okay, so let's deal with that.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Paul Down, attorney for the applicant. With me is Rachel Maurice of Civil Tech Engineering Surveying, the project engineer. Um, I heard when you were reading the public hearing notice that you questioned whether we need a variance for a maximum development coverage.
Right.
Um, we do not need a variance for that. A maximum development coverage is a waiver by the planning board under the village's new law. Um, so we're not requesting a variance. That's a waiver request that's been made by the planning board.
It's fine.
I just wanted to-
You just shut up when you planned.
Yeah.
Yeah, I called it out for the waiver.
Yeah.
It has two dollars instead of a one.
So I ju- I just wanted to clarify that. So, um, as you read in your public hearing notice, this is an application for freestanding house of worship under ten thousand square feet. This structure meets all the bulk requirements in terms of lot area, lot width, front set back. Um, we have two of them, side setbacks, rear setbacks, street frontage, height, F A R. We miss in three areas. Development coverage, as we just pointed out, parking-
You say you have approval for that?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. But we've been before the planning board, and the planning board has indicated their willingness, and it's, it's not a, it's not really discretionary with the planning board. They have to waive it as long as we provide an adequate stormwater management plan. And we have done that. That plan has been reviewed by the village's engineer and accepted, so we're, we're confident with that. Um, so, um, so in those three areas that we miss, the development coverage is a waiver by the planning board. The parking is also a waiver by the planning board. So the only thing we're before your board for is a front yard variance. Um, um, so, um, the parking is the main factor here that you're driving the bus. We, we had originally proposed twenty-six spaces, which is going to be twenty-four for the house of worship. And I want to show you the original plan. It was submitted to the planning board.
This is the original.
Yeah, this is the original plan. So we had, we had twenty-four spaces here and two over here for the rabbi's residence for a total of twenty-six. When the planning board looked at this, they said, you know what? We think you need more parking. Twenty-four is, is not going to be enough. So we added four additional spaces. The problem is, is we can't go back because there's a steep slope that goes up, rises about thirteen feet from the parking lot up to the lot line. Um, so we went forward. And going forward, we reduced the front yard to five point seven feet. And that measurement, though, is to the designated street line, um, which is here, not to the edge of the pavement. So between the designated street line and the edge of the pavement is about another eighteen point eight feet of property. So the parking is actually going to be set back twenty-four feet.
Could you point to that again?
Yes.
The eighteen feet.
So from, from the property line is the designated street line. From there to the pavement is like eighteen and a half feet.
Okay.
So you're, yeah, that's from the parking to there even further. So even though it's only five point seven, the property line is the designated street line, you still have space to the road.
Yeah, it's not like the parking spaces are going to be right on top of the road. Um, if Cherry Lane is ever widened to the designated street line to the full length, well, then you got a different story. But they never widen the full length of the right-of-way. They always usually keep a shoulder on each side, five, ten feet. So, um, I think the chances of the road being widened to the designated street line are, uh, not very likely. Um, so, um, that's the nature of the application. There, there are some review letters, and we're okay with most of the review letters, but I'd like to go through the G M L letter because they had some concerns. We have no override requests from the G M L. But the first comment was they want us to comply with comments made by the Rockland County Highway Department, and I'll, I'll get to that. But the other thing is they want you to look at screening of the parking lot. So Rachel, could you bring up the landscape plan? On the landscape plan, to the south of the property, to the south of the parking lot, we've planted or proposing to plant eleven green giant arborvitae. Um, and along the property line between this lot and the lot to the south, there's a, an established mature, um, screening of trees that also provides additional leper. Behind the property, as I indicated, there's a steep slope. It goes up about thirteen feet. As it is now, we're going to have a retaining wall. How high is the retaining wall, Rachel?
The retaining wall is about five feet tall, so-
And there'll be a fence on top of that retaining wall.
So separated.
And in the front, along the right-of-way, we've provided, um, some boxlets to shield the cars from the roadway. So that's the screening we proposed. We're not proposing any fencing. If the board feels that additional screening is necessary or additional fencing is necessary.
This is, uh, this is an existing road. This side will be the rabbi's house. So we're just proposing the two parking spaces for the rabbi's house.
We have the proposed renderings that are going to A R C on Monday. I just- They're not approved, but just to give you an idea of what it would look like.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, Mr. Brown.
May I, Mr. Philman? Thank you. Um, you said the planning board was okay with the level of parking that's now provided?
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, as part of the traffic impact study, they have requested that we do a parking analysis. So on, um, two days, um, our traffic consultant went out there. He went out there on Wednesday, June fourth, then on Thursday, June fifth, between the hours of seven A M. and nine thirty A M. Um, and he saw the peak demand was eleven vehicles on Wednesday, the fourth, and fourteen on Thursday, the fifth. So, based upon his observance and his report, um, the, and, and the village traffic consultant said it's very unlikely that this use is going to generate significant traffic impacts on surrounding roadways and intersections. And they were satisfied that the twenty-six spaces that we're showing for the house of worship is going to be adequate for their needs. It's more than adequate. It's probably going to have, you know, at least another pet spaces, uh, that we need. But, um, they, they wanted to make sure we had enough so that there's no spill out onto Cherry Lane. There's no parking on Cherry Lane. There's no parking on Blossom Road. And the rabbi was willing to put the parking in.
So you're saying the level of, uh, I'm used to term membership of, of the school, you know, parking is sufficient for the level of membership that is currently, uh-
Yes, yes.
Who did you say?
Yes.
Okay.
There's twenty-eight spaces provided and thirty are required, so it's ninety-three point three percent compliant.
Okay.
And then they did the analysis to show that it was an offset.
We only missed it by two spaces. And, and, and it's been confirmed by the rabbi based upon the use and by this, um, traffic study as well as the parking analysis that there's adequate spaces and that twenty-six will be adequate for the needs of the planning board.
If that's what you're putting, if that's what you're saying, I just would be concerned there wouldn't be any, let's say, backup to disturb, um, let's say Blossom Road.
Well, that, that was the goal, is to make sure that we don't have a backup pulling in, that we don't disturb traffic on Cherry Lane, that, you know, we don't have parking on Cherry Lane, and there's no overfull parking on Blossom. So that's why the planning board said add some spaces. And by adding spaces, you're more than happy to do it, except it brings us into greater non-conformity of the front yard.
Got you.
And that's why we were asking for a variance. We actually, we would have been here asking for a variance anyway, because even with the twenty-four spaces, we would have been shy of meeting the front yard. We would have been twenty-four feet away instead of five point seven feet.
The planning board spoke about the screening, you know, on Cherry Lane, or is it something that you would-
They, uh, they haven't really commented on it at this point. Uh, but this was, this was in your G M L review that the county department of planning wanted you to take a look at. So pointing out what we're providing and if the board feels additional screening is necessary, we're happy to provide additional screening. The board feels-
I didn't want to.
Except the back-
On Cherry Lane. No, not additional, just whatever's ringing.
Just back-
If there's an intent to provide.
You showed the, the-
The property line is the street line.
The whole front road, the parking lot, come out there, boxlets right there, as I showed them.
Okay. No, not additional, that there is.
Yeah, that's where the-
I, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not existing. We're, we're going to install this.
No, I get it. I know the-
There's nothing additional required. Like, it's in where it needs to be, the line is where it needs to be.
But what would prevent you from showing the D S L on Blossom when you're on church?
You want me to just label the fifty feet wide? I think it's- No, the pavement's not fifty foot wide on Blossom Road. That's the right of way.
This is pressure hour speaking. I, I can't hear both people say anything. Um, I just want to go through the Rockland County Highway Department's letter real quick. So when this pressure hour is finished, I'd like to go through that letter with the board.
That's ready. Yeah, um, I don't know if the board wants to take, uh, to village board about possibly putting it on, and we've done this before, many times, um, to ask the village board to have the options, um, should the board decide that it won't, uh, that no parking signs, uh, so that no one parks.
I think that's a good idea, Blossom.
You can not without that.
Yes, I like that different.
That's great.
On one side, two sides, or is it just, I don't know.
Keep it on one side.
Um, yeah, just one last thing is, um, the Rockland County Highway Department letter, I'd like to just to go through it because the board has said that we must comply with those comments. Um, so I'd just like to go through the comments. Number one of their comments is the proposal represents a significantly denser development that currently exists and requires several variances for the bulk standards. Um, right away, I would point out, it's not significantly denser. It's actually in line with the code and what's permitted, and, um, we only require the one variance from here as we indicated. So they're saying approving it would be to overdevelopment of the lot and humiliatedly such project would worsen traffic congestion, street parking, flooding, potentially resulting in substandard developments throughout the area, and the applicant must investigate and mitigate these. Um-
You've done this, haven't you?
We, we have done it. We, uh, the traffic impact study, as I indicated, the conclusion was that traffic is going to not be significant. It's not going to create any congestion. Uh, we added the extra spaces to avoid any possible street parking. We've got adequate stormwater control to prevent any flooding. Um, so their first comment, I think, has been addressed. Um, their second comment is they want a stormwater management report as required for the proposed plan. We have done that. Um, and that's been accepted by the village's engineer. Um, and their third comment was is the proposed action is expected to generate additional traffic. And given that existing county roads are already experiencing significant congestion, they want a, um, a road widening from the applicant for Cherry Lane. And again, the county's position that we're going to generate additional traffic is misplaced. The traffic impact study indicated that most of the traffic that's coming here is already on the roads. We're not bringing in traffic from throughout the village or around the county. It's all local traffic that'd be passing by anyway. And with regard to the widening for the D S L, as Rachel pointed out, the front property line and the D S L are the same line. We've met the sixty-foot right-of-way for Cherry Lane, um, so no additional widening is required. And county already owns up to the designated street line, so there's no property to give them. So, um, with that, um, I have nothing else to add.
Basically, what you're asking for, one variance with a setback from whatever it is, five point seven feet.
Correct.
And a waiver.
No, the waiver is not here.
Whatever is not our, not our, not our-
By ask for a waiver rather than a variance.
Can we open the public hearing?
Chairman, can I make a motion to open this up to the public? I'll make, you need somebody to make a motion. But, I'm sorry, I, I-
That's fine, that's fine.
I have no idea.
We're written, second your motion.
Okay.
On the waiver?
All right.
Sorry, Mr. Philman.
Okay, so, I'm gonna-
All right, uh, sorry, boss. I'm sorry, I didn't-
The only person I know, that's, that's-
I just like, fortunate to have-
All right, can you open the public hearing?
Yeah.
We have one person that would like to speak, the rabbi, the applicant, that I wish to be answered.
One hundred and eighty seconds.
Good evening, Chairman, Board. Name's Rabbi Shulam Shik, the owner of the Congress. I have to report about Cherry Lane. We're here to address this small nice synagogue we have moved to the community. It's, we asked only for one variance and because of the year, we called small variance, and we gave in more parking as they needed initially. And because of that, we need to go, because it's going to be much more going back. So we asked only the small variance. And it's, I guess, it's local traffic. It's not, it's mostly from the street in Blossom, and it's Blossom, these streets around this kind of condition. And looking forward to, uh, the board to put this project down. Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Eighty seconds.
Second before you, before you left, can we just mention all of the correspondence we just sent to get you into the record?
All right, G M L on Rockland County, dated August seventh. Rockland County Highway, dated July seventeen. Towne Fair and Road, dated July twenty eighth. Rockland County Store, July twenty second. Rockland County Environmental Health, August twelve. The secret resolution from the planning board, dated, uh, June twenty-sixth.
Is everyone done?
Yes.
And so I have Mr. Brown, uh, in the area of, uh, somewhere, uh, with regard to the standards in the planning of the-
Right, and that's dated, uh, July eighth.
You done?
Yes.
Because I'd like to make a motion, close the public hearing?
Close seconds.
Close it. All right.
All right.
Time in common. Obviously, the synagogue is needed. According to our state law, we have to, you know, the-
You need to talk to the microphone.
Yeah, according to our state law, the religious institutions do their preference. It's not a very big variance to give. And obviously, this thing is needed. I like the plans. I like the visuals. I'd like to make a motion to that. I'd like to vote to approve these plans, but you have time to second.
I'll second.
Oh, yeah, one more thing. What Dan mentioned about the, 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 no parking signs and the idea, uh, Inspector, who's the name?
Also, I have a question. All the projects we were putting on Cherry Lane, we've been asking them to install sidewalks. And if this is a walking congregation, it wouldn't make sense to put sidewalks on this one as well.
Yeah, but what good is the sidewalk if nobody else has sidewalk?
Actually, we made, we made the ambulance depot put in the sidewalk, the next block put in the sidewalk, central U T is putting-
I would-
Is that applicant's system okay with it, so?
I asked you, um, very pleased to get you after that question. I'm happy to hear this question. And it's very important, Cherry Lane should have service, and I'm going to get inside.
Good, so I made that.
Can the, um, can the no parking signs just be that we have to ask the board, but it's not, it can't be a condition because we can't make it?
Of course.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, yeah, can't make the village. Okay. I just wanted to check, thank you.
Yeah, I think it could probably be limited to, you know, seven till nine o'clock, or seven to nine thirty, which is when, you know, the services are in the morning and maybe at night. I'll leave, I'll leave that up to the village board.
Yeah, that's not a-
That being said-
Okay.
The other, the other two issues, I mean, that have it just-
No warning.
So if it belongs to the family, what else we can lose?
No, 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 no.
It's village board.
Village board.
Village board.
Very well. So I would vote to approve and I would put it for the second. With these, with these conditions, that means sidewalk and-
We have to make a motion to vote.
Oh, see, I want to make a motion to vote. Are you ready?
For you to do that. Here's one thing I want to make after, we sort of know. Mr. Brown, do you believe that you need any overrides in our G M L?
We just went through them.
There were recommendations.
We went through them. Um, the only one that we wanted to discuss was the screening, and I guess the board feels that the screening is adequate.
Yes.
And then they want us to comply with the comments of the Rockland County Highway Department, and we went through those, which asked us to investigate and mitigate their concerns, which has been done. They wanted a stormwater management report, which has been done. And they've asked for gratuitous dedication of the portion of the land within the designated street line, and we don't own any property beyond the designated street line, so we can't give it to them. Cherry Lane, this is why the right-of-way, the county owns the entire right-of-way, all sixty feet, or at least thirty feet on our side.
But how do you handle, do you need a, a permit for that?
Yes, we do. So-
How are you going to handle that if they continue to insist on that?
Well, they can insist that we give them our property that's not within the designated street line. Their official map, such Cherry Lane, is supposed to be a sixty-foot right-of-way, and we have thirty feet on our side, so we can't go back anymore.
Not at all. There you go. Now I open stuff for both.
Yes.
Well, first, is there any discussion on it? Well, just if any member has anything to say, that's all. I don't. I'm just saying if anybody else.
No, I don't. I don't.
Okay. So we write.
Right side, motion for the chairman?
Usually, we're not doing that.
Jacob?
I'll make a roll call.
And then your roll call, please. Um, Jacob, seven minutes.
I'll vote to approve the variance, um, through the, well, sort of the, relatively very nice landscaping, and includes the community and everything, so I'll vote to approve that.
And if you don't want, uh, it's also like you want the matter, uh, with regard to, um, no parking signs to be, uh-
Same as the chairman's issue.
Requested or, um, sort of, from the village board by the-
Yeah, same as the chairman's mention.
And you mentioned the site, so I have that in the chair, yes, I'm sure. Uh, member Berger?
Yeah, I vote to approve the variances, um, and I think the, uh, man, the project, uh, I think that they did a good job of the planning, um, you know, due to the weather blocks community, meaning places of worship that are in within walking distance, uh, that's, that's probably appropriate, one to be in that location. I like the cooperation. I like, you know, the fact that they're willing to put sidewalks in. I think that adds to their safety, so I'll, I'll approve. Vote to approve.
The very voice, my opinion, like, who?
I'll vote to approve because of the need for the community and the nice landscaping and the sidewalks and the, they're going to go after the signs from the village. That recommendation, uh, I vote to approve.
I'm just giving up.
All right, given the, uh, planning board's, uh, request to, uh, install additional parking, which is necessitated the request here for a variance, taking those spaces closer to the road, um, you know, I would say to assist in the free exercise of religion, I would grant this, uh, because it's not a great substantial detriment to the community or to the environment. So, yes.
Thank you.
Darren, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, public hearing on the application of a flying client, a living rooming place for variances, or two, you, a new two-story dwelling with a basement.
Thank you so much for helping me get that. One, I want to, I'll look quick. You guys were worried about sidewalks. My, he's got killed, like, um, old man, I care like a four-year-old about sidewalks. If you guys are worried about a sidewalk from the dis- If you guys are worried about sidewalks from this property, the guy should apply the pressure on the state to put sidewalks on Cherry Lane. I walk every weekend on Cherry Lane with my kids, and it's really dangerous. So if you guys are really worried, it's a healthy road, the village short as the county won't install sidewalks here. But it's really dangerous, not only from the synagogue, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing on the application of a flying client, eleven Woodman Place, for variances for a new two-story dwelling with a basement. Variances are being requested from Article three, two, ten, dash seventeen, attachment seven, table four, R twenty-five. Both requirements of the residential district are non-zoning code and follows. Pre-existing, non-conforming. Lot width is a hundred and twenty-five feet are required, a hundred feet are proposed. Required for the project. Side setback, twenty feet required, fourteen feet proposed. Hillside setback, fifty feet required, thirty-four feet proposed. Floor area ratio is point two five, proposed is point three one. The property is located on the south side of Woodman Place, approximately four hundred and fifty feet, east of Laura Drive. The lot is designated as section fifty-six, point thirteen, block two, block twenty-seven, on the town of Ramapo Tax Map. The property is located in the R twenty-five zoning district, is comprised of point five seven acres. The address is eleven Woodman Place, point five seven. The address is eleven Woodman Place, area number one zero nine five two.
Point five seven.
Point twenty-five, twenty-five thousand square feet. Senator, any thoughts, representing my client? And we come here for, for variances.
Public, we can't hear you speaking, we need lawyer.
One is a pre-existing. One is a pre-existing.
Those in the back.
How these guys, please, uh.
Those speaking in the public, you can please be quiet so that the Board can hear everyone, thank you.
There's one pre-existing, um, variance that we're just required to make it, um, legal, once we go here with variance. And then we have three new variances. Two of those are because of my front sit-back. My front property line is pre-existing, smaller than the required. So we automatically. It's a narrow property that we require, so we automatically propose the property line. And then there's one thing that we're requiring is a foyer ratio, instead of twenty-five, the day one. So the side sit-back, we have not fourteen, but the fourteen is counted from at the stairs. The staircase is the basement, so technically, the house is about eighteen to nineteen, so it's like one or two feet, the actual house.
It's a new construction?
It's a new construction, formal construction.
Any plans in the boat? Any pens in the boat?
No. Not any, any major variances. Main thing is the, the foyer ratio.
Any questions?
Oh, at this moment? Yeah, could you build a smaller house that can conform to the lot? Stay with the question, stay with the question.
That'd be fabulous.
I have to ask it.
Crazy, crazy. They also put it in a garage. Most people don't put in garages, as a mountain likes garage, so you don't want to get that out.
Okay.
It's not really crazy, crazy. We discussed that, we tried to avoid variance, but I didn't want to ever.
So wait, what, uh? Is there any, is there a house on the lot now?
Yes, it's going to be a house, a small, small tiny house. I don't have the exact square footage all done, but it's a small tiny house.
You're going to take it down?
Yes, we're taking it down, but we need to form a little construction.
And the, um, I forgot, I read the, uh, what was the square footage, uh?
The property is twenty-five thousand square feet.
No, the, uh, the square. I'm just curious. How many?
Seven, six, six, three. Seven thousand, six hundred, sixty-three, and we put in the garage in the basement.
All right, minus the garage.
Uh, okay.
I wouldn't approve the garage, you know, I.
When we.
And I'll just count the garage for.
Garage counts.
Yeah, that's counted.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, broken down, twenty-five, twenty-five.
Okay. That was my point.
Okay, we're done?
Uh, for the record, there's no GML. We have a letter from Rockland County Store, July thirty-first, twenty-five. Towne Graham, D. B. W., July twenty-eighth, twenty-five. And there's no letter, but it's in the system, and I printed it out for the file. Rockland County Health had no comment, as well.
Anything else? Any, any, anybody sign up?
No one signed up to speak.
Good. Anyway, I can open up.
Yes.
I'd like to formally open up the public hearing.
And you need to do secret.
Oh. So subject to secret, you know?
Yes, but it's a type-two action requiring no further review.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to open up.
So the motion is open.
Yeah. First, she's going to do the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion, open the public hearing. Anybody, you don't want to speak?
Second the motion.
Form a favor?
Aye.
Anybody speaking?
There's no one signed up for eleven Woodman, okay?
Very well. Second.
Who seconded that?
I did. Form a favor?
Aye.
Very well, so it was closed. I'd like, this is, I think we're going to have two of these every, every session. These annual lots, if people want to build a house that conforms to what people want nowadays. I'm sure it brings added value to property and neighborhood as well. So I'd like to approve it. It's impossible to do anything else in such an ass lot, so I'd ask you. Anyway, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to approve this thing.
Before you do it in a third, you have to do secret, you need a motion on secret.
I was going to do that.
Okay.
Okay, everything that we're doing, obviously, is subject to us getting secret. Which is why I'd like to see this thing fully get secret, but obviously, I can't help it. So anyways, subject to getting secret approval, or rather, uh, non objection or negative declaration, which we're assuming you're going to get, otherwise, the project doesn't go forward. But we're assuming you're getting a negative deck on secret. As I said before, this, we're going to see this all by time, because we're, there are lots, and we're going to have to have these variances. So I'm going to approve this project. And I feel like I'm going to second it.
I'll second it.
Good. Local?
Um, Mr. Bell?
You just seconded the motion.
I know, I'm asking for local, huh?
Oh, oh.
You're asking me?
Yes.
Uh, reluctantly, I'll, I'll vote yes on this. I, you know, some of the side setbacks are a little bit bigger. I'd like, I would have liked to see somewhat of a smaller structure, but understanding the needs of, uh, the applicant, I'll vote yes. And there being no objections from the public.
Okay, uh, Mr. Strulovitz?
I would also vote yes, I would like to see some pens on the side, but not, doesn't.
I can't agree, we'd like to see.
I would also like to see some pens, but no, not the things you see.
Uh, I've already stated my opinion.
I always do the chairman last, because it goes a tie vote, then you bring the tie. Uh, Member Burger?
Yeah, I vote to approve the applicant's, uh, requests. You know, it's a smaller, uh, property, and, uh, that is the, uh, the type of homes that are being built. It fits well into the neighborhood, so I'll approve it.
And Mr. Simmons?
I assume I approved, uh, I'll approve the variances, based on the other members' set. If you need to pick a housing, and then have the neighborhood.
Okay, so much, and then Chair.
I vote to.
Motion carries.
So motion carries five to zero, the meeting.
Okay. Public hearing on the application of Samuel Klein, seven, direct ride for a variance for proposed improvements to the property, for the installation of a pool house at Daniel area. The developmental coverage variance is being requested from Article three, two, ten, dash fifty, attachment five, table two. R forty of the residential district bulk requirements of air mod zoning code as follows. Developmental coverage, twenty percent required, twenty-five point two percent proposed. The property is located on the south side of the rectoride, approximately five hundred feet, east of Church Road. The lot is designated as section sixty-one point oh eight, block one, lot three point six, on the town of Ramapo Tax Map. Property is located in the R forty zoning district, and is comprised of point nine five eight acres. The address is seven, direct ride, Monson, New York, one zero nine five two.
Joel Shaker, representing the client, with an expediter.
Uh, can you hear, what did you say?
My name's Joel Shaker, I'm representing this client, an expediter, so all he wants is basically add a pool house.
Yeah, so.
He uses an overlay, and some gravel. Problem is, that increases the lot size from twenty to twenty-five, so he's basically.
Coverage, you need this.
So it's a five percent over, so he's asking for variance, doesn't have any effect on the property, nothing else, it's just, uh, it's just a pool house.
The only thing you're asking for is the variance on the, on the. For a pool.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion, open the public hearing.
It's basically increasing the variance, the overlay.
Very well.
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Anybody signed up?
No one had signed up for seven, correct?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye.
Who seconded?
Aye.
No.
Aye, he first, that's him.
Form a favor? Good, public hearing is closed. Do we have anybody signed up?
No one had signed up.
Close.
Um.
Good, just tell them.
For the record, we have a letter from the town of Ramapo, dated, uh, town of D. B. W., dated July twenty-eighth. Uh, Rockland County Health, August twelfth. And Rockland County Store, July eighteenth, there's no GML.
Good.
For secret, this is considered a type-two action.
Yeah, but the fact is, we do not have the negative deck, and we're going to get it anyway.
A negative deck is a different kind of secret action. This is a type-two, requiring no further review.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variances. Huh?
Second.
All right, say that again, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variances.
Okay.
Second.
Form a favor?
Yeah, call the roll.
I'm going to do, I'm going to do the roll. Um, Jacob Simmons?
I'll vote to approve.
To Burger?
I'll vote to approve.
Joe Strulovitz?
I'll vote to approve.
Marty Cabell?
Vote to approve, I don't believe the, uh, request is substantial or, uh, anyway detrimental to the surrounding neighborhoods. So I'll vote yes.
I'll concur.
And you also, so motion carries five to zero. Variations are going.
Okay. Public hearing on the application of Klein, it's six, Dunn Road, for variances for a new two-story, single-family dwelling, on a twenty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-six point five square foot lot. Variance are being requested from Article three, two, ten, dash fifty, attachment five, table two, R forty of the residential district bulk. Requirements of air mod zoning code as follows. Front setback, thirty-five feet required, twenty-two point two feet proposed. Front yard, thirty-five feet required, twenty-two point two feet proposed. The property is located on the north side of Dunn Road, approximately two hundred and forty-five feet east of Thompson Drive. The lot is designated as section fifty-six point eighteen, block one, lot thirty-three, on the town of Ramapo Tax Map. Property is located in the R twenty-five zoning district, and is comprised of point five six four acres. The address is six Dunn Road, Monson, New York, one zero nine five two.
The lot is twenty-four and a half thousand square feet, something like that?
Yeah.
I see, and it's new construction?
It's new construction, in the middle of construction. So hello, my name is Joseph Scherg, I'm the applicant's attorney. Um, so you are correct, it's in the middle of construction. The intent at first was to build the house with no variances, and they didn't need variances, so it was.
Request approved?
Yeah, um, in the middle of construction, this is really all about the front steps, being a little bit too close to the, um, being too close to the road. So, uh, in the middle of construction, they realized it, and so that, that's what this is about. Um, the required front setback is thirty-five feet, there twenty-two point two, and the front yard is thirty-five feet, and there twenty-two point two. They could not go backwards, because this, our arms are off, the power lines are right there in the back door. So they could just go backwards even if they want to go backwards. Um, I, I went to the site, it looked directly across the street, directly, by Dunn. It's not thirty-five feet from the road, not even close to thirty-five feet from the road. So they're not doing, and it's not, and they're not putting the house there, I've talked about that. So they're not really doing anything that's, um, how the character of the neighborhood.
Uh, what's the, uh, concrete, the GML?
So they, I didn't see a county GML at all, let.
There is no GML.
There is no GML, yeah.
And, and we can comply with it, but she loves, she got it from the town.
Actually, we have this three block, I have a copy from your health. So we have the town of Ramapo, D. B. W., dated July twenty-eighth, uh, August thirteenth. The Rockland County Health, that will be in late four thirty-five. And Rockland County Store, August twelve. There is no GML.
So, and the, and the objections?
No, 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 it's just their standard comments, um, and actually, the health said they didn't even have any comments. And this is also a type-two action for secret, not requiring any other review, that you would need.
Don't answer any questions.
Anybody, Marty, anything?
No one signed up for six Dunn, I mean, yeah, six Dunn. No one signed up.
Stand, stand, that story, yeah.
So could you, uh, could I actually ask you something?
Still need to, public hearing opened.
Mid construction?
It's like Dunn, if you walk, if you drive by it, you can see it, it's almost finished, Dunn, Dunn. It's up, I mean, I drove by it.
So what, what happened, uh, the steps for the building, uh, foundation with Mr. Building Inspector, what happened?
The building's taller than it should be, because it's three stories. They do have a full sprinkler system, but they misunderstood the height and the amount of stairs that we need to get down the grade. So the staircase doesn't have further than it needs to.
So what about the height? You're saying the height is beyond the zoning code?
No, it's within zoning code, and they have a sprinkler system.
Oh, okay. Where you said, you know.
Oh, but the way the floors are laid out, one of the floors was supposed to totally buried, it's sticking up higher than it is. It just didn't dig deep enough, so it's sticking up. So to get the stairwell out of the main level.
Yeah.
And then it's a grade, there's more steps than they can actually fit in the area.
So that's, that necessitates this request for.
It's not the first time it happened, it happened over on Lorna, too, the same way. Staircase ended up being longer than it needed to be to get from the height down to the grade.
Hmm, okay, not the first one.
No.
Nonetheless.
I was wondering how that happened.
Should go look at it.
Okay, can we open the public hearing? And make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
No one signed up for six Dunn.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Form a favor?
Aye.
You need to do a motion on secret, please?
Make a motion.
That's a type-two action, requiring no further review.
No, please, no, please, I require.
Only a second, please?
Second.
Form a favor?
Aye.
Good.
I'd like to make a motion to approve variances.
Okay.
Second.
I'm, I'm seconding it.
Are you approved?
I'm just going to do a quick local?
Yes.
I'll vote to approve.
Burger?
Approve, I vote to approve.
Approve, I vote to approve.
Strovitz?
Agree.
Cabell?
Yes, uh, I don't see any detriment to the, uh, surrounding environment, understanding the necessity for the big block. Yes.
And Chairman's part?
I concur.
Thank you very much, we're very happy to take it.
Motion carries five to zero, variances approved.
Okay, public hearing on the application of Blue River Estates, four thirty, four thirty-four, and four forty-four, Saddle River Road, construction ladder and ground divots, of senior housing. The lots will be merged and especially permit for the requirements of Article twelve, section two-ten-dash-one-oh-two, is required from the plan for variances requested from Article three-two-ten-dash-sixteen, attached from six, Table three, R thirty-five, and Article three-two-ten-dash-fourteen, attached from four, Table one, R fifty, of the residential district and all bulk requirements of the Airmont zoning code as follows. Following interpretations in the field are made. Two-ten-dash-one-oh-two point, Al, central refuse, refus, collection areas are required, hemorrhage or hidden trash cans are provided. Whether locations of driveway comply with the zoning code, whether additional parking is required for the two community rooms. The proposed site plan has identified the following necessary variances. Side setback, fifty feet is required, thirty feet is proposed. Total side setback, hundred feet required, sixty feet are proposed. Side yard, fifty feet required, thirty feet proposed. Developmental coverage, twenty percent, required, twenty-seven point four-six proposed. Distance between buildings, fifty feet, required, twenty feet proposed. Distance between driveway, refuse area and building, thirty feet required, zero feet proposed. The property is located on the west side of Saddle River Road approximately seventy-eight feet south of Long Metal Drive. The lots are designated as section sixty-two, one-eleven, blocks two, lots eight-nine-and-ten on the town of Ranacote tax map. Property is located in the R thirty-five, R fifty zoning district, is comprised of seventeen point nine-nine acres. The address is four-thirty, four-thirty-four, and four-forty-four, Saddle River Road, Monson, New York, one zero nine five two. Combine the three lots?
Yes. Good evening, everybody, Ira Emanuel, and I'm the deputy senior city. I have with me Joel Bianchi from NJ Engineering, uh, Star City, New York, who is the project engineer. Uh, as was read, that in the public hearing notices and application of variances in connection with proposed senior housing project. The, uh, the Board of Trustees recently approved R S H zoning for this property, uh, and also granted the necessary special permit, uh, for senior housing. Uh, under secret, this is a type-one action. Uh, as a result of, of that, and as a result of the magnitude of the proposal, we undertook a full environmental impact statement review. So, we went through the whole nine yards, scoping, draft E I S, final E I S, uh, public hearings, uh, culminating in a finding statement by the planning board, uh, that resulted in favorable findings from environmental perspective. Uh, under the zo, under the secret regulations, each involved agency must make its own findings statement. And so, when the Board of Trustees issued, uh, a special permit, granted, uh, the R S H zoning, it too, uh, issued a favorable findings statement. Uh, one of the, uh, things that you will have to do, uh, at some point, uh, is to issue your own findings statement, uh, because that is part of your responsibility under the E I S process. Uh, we had previously sent, uh, to your council, a draft, uh, findings statement, uh, for his use, for your use. Use it, don't use it, that's entirely up to you, but we thought it would be a good idea to, to send something to you, uh, to at least give you an understanding of what those things look like. Uh, the project is for a hundred and five units, uh, excuse me, the site is the former Blue River Day Camp, uh, on Saddle River Road, it's just north of the Saddle River, uh, swimming pool, it's owned by the town of Ramapo. Uh, the project is for a hundred and five units of senior housing on sixteen point one-eight acres net. Um, these are multifamily units, but it's not an apartment building. Uh, and, uh, Bianchi will lay out exactly how that works. Um, the density that we're, uh, asking for, that we're proposing, uh, is six point two-five dwelling units per acre. Uh, your code allows twenty dwelling units per acre for multifamily. Uh, and so, we're asking for about a third, uh, of the density that we would otherwise be entitled to, uh, but we're not taking advantage of that because of the way that we want to set this up. With that, Joel?
Sure. Again, Joel Bianchi with NJ Engineering. So, as, uh, Mr. Manuel indicated, we had done an exhaustive environmental review for this project, um, that include a number of topics, water sewer, stormwater, traffic, um, those are typically are the most important to land use boards, but additional things such as endangered species, wetlands, habitat, visual assessment, impacts of land use. Um, and as Mr. Manuel indicated, both boards that have seen this so far have concurred with the, the E I S, with the planning board issuing, um, a final E I S and findings. Um, the E I S process found no adverse impacts as a result of this project, or that the design itself mitigated any of those impacts. Now, specific to the project, it's providing public sewer for all the units, public water for all the units, stormwater complies with the New York State design, uh, design standards, uh, published by D C. All the stormwater, the basins will likely be on through the H O A, but we're still working through those preliminary design. Uh, the design entirely avoids federal or state wetlands, entirely avoid, avoids any regulated floodplains that are regulated by the village. So, that's, that's the design of that. I know some items relative to, uh, neighbors' concerns or about traffic, um, sort of segue into some of the comments that we've gotten from Rockland County Highway.
Do you have any, do you have a traffic study?
A full comprehensive traffic study was done. It was, the scope of that study was vetted out through the E I S scoping projects. We worked with the village's consultant, um, Nelson Pope. We also coordinated with Rockland County, Diane over Rockland County about what critical intersections needed to be studied. And through that study, we found that the project had no impacts on the local water network. That's primarily driven by the use. The population that this, this project targets tends to drive during non-peak hours, but in general, also travels less frequently than typical si, single-family homes. So, just to go over some of the engineering comments that we got, I think that may be of importance to this board as we deliver it on the application.
Well, we'll mark it through the layout first.
Oh, sure.
That way we can see what we're talking about.
So, the board has rendered copies of this, the, and also have more preliminary plans that we submitted. So, again, there's, uh, two access points off of Saddle River Road. Ample circulation internal to the site. We provided analysis for returning templates for emergency services, showing that we can accommodate multiple entrances into, through the site, through all the cross streets, and the main arterial, through this way. As I said earlier, all the streets will have public water, public sewer, and stormwater. It's all, all the stormwater is diverted to a large stormwater basin that sort of joins with the water body. Again, we, uh, stormwater, we have to meet whatever the site discharges today, stormwater mitigation has people that are in a developed condition. For sanitary sewer, we're sort of working through some alternative, but right now, everything flows to a pump station that will pump it up to the county sewer that runs a little south on the other side.
Has the county approved?
We're not at that stage yet. They, they, they're aware of the analysis, they provided no substantive comments on the analysis. We believe, we've proven through analysis that it provides no adverse impact, and that was completed through the E I S and secret process. We will seek final approval for them once we're in the planning board, per se, or the planning board.
But along those lines, uh, I mentioned that this was, this was a full E I S, okay? And so, all the involved agencies received everything in the E I S. That includes county sewer, that includes town of Ranacote, D W, that includes county highway, county health, all the various county agencies. Your board, uh, was included in that, and you have in your files, or you should have in your files, uh, a, a full set of the draft E I S and the full, and the final E I S.
Yeah, but the planning board also, uh, saw that.
The, the planning, the planning board considered that as part of its environmental findings, and yes, were, were, they were happy with it.
And, and to expand on what Mr. Manuel said is, not only did they have the opportunity, and were provided the technical analysis, early on in the process, they were given ample opportunity to comment on the project relative to what they were concerned with, and what we should focus our study on.
So, this has been fully vetted by the planning board, by all the county agencies, by all the town agencies, by all the.
Even the state, D C's, uh, support and recreation. All the, see, all the agencies that have permitting, approval, jurisdiction, have been fully involved from the start-up.
And there's a copy of the final statement from Mayor Patrick, of the findings of the planning board. And we had emailed it, and we got it approved, and you.
Some closing remarks, and I believe they tie into some of the interpretations that were requested. You know, as this layout, we have parking for each unit, we have overflow visitor parking, and based on our approach and analysis of the code, we meet the parking requirement. However, we're seeking from this board's interpretation. There's also two green rules here, here, uh, on, sort of, the acorns on the project, and we believe by our reading of the code, that we meet the parking requirements of the village.
The only thing's for sure, you're on Saddle River, right?
Yes.
And parking on Saddle River is illegal, or there will be signs with that effect?
Yes, we, again, because we, we, we have shown ample parking for the individual residential units, overflow for visitors, as well as for completed centers. It will leave any community necessity to park on Saddle River Road, and it's not really accommodating for, it's, it's like the.
Yeah, um, if you do a parking analysis, parking analysis.
We did it based on your code. So, that's why, it's our position, we meet the code, don't deny the. So, if the board has any other questions, since the site may answer.
Marty?
Uh, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the philosophy of, of the plan, because it's important in dealing when we get to a discussion of the variances.
I remembered a lecture you gave on that subject.
Sorry?
I remember a lecture you gave on that subject. I'll bring it up.
So, the philo, the philosophy of this plan, uh, well, let me step back. Your zoning code, when it comes to senior housing, really contemplates either an apartment building, okay? Or a, a traditional townhouse structure. If you think about the two existing, uh, senior housing, uh, projects that are within, uh, the village of, uh, Airmont, okay? They are basically apartment buildings. Uh, and so, they've got, you've got apartment buildings, you've got, oh, you've got the parking, eh, the parking fields that are attendant to the parking, uh, uh, attendant to a, um, apartment building. Uh, the code was designed to accommodate those projects. Uh, this dates back to the eighties. Uh, your code, and because I was there, I remembered, your code, uh, uh, very closely mimicked, uh, the R S H zoning that was put in in the town of Ranacote. And, and I'm not suggesting there's anything wrong with your code, okay? But, it envisioned a very specific type of thing. When we looked at, when the applicant looked at the site, uh, they felt that that type of building, that type of arrangement, it was not appropriate for the neighborhood. This neighborhood has single-family homes at the north side, it's got single-family homes across the street, uh, on Saddle River Road, not in the village, but they're there. Uh, you've got open space, uh, to the north, uh, to the northwest, on the west side, and then you've got this Saddle River Pool to the south. And so, the applicant decided was that a better way of handling this was to do a, a form of multifamily that didn't look like an apartment building, uh, but rather would look closer, uh, to what we think of as residential development. Uh, and the model they took was the hydrovillas development that's in the town of Ranacote. And this very closely mimics that. As a result, because we're looking for a different type of development, a different configuration, we don't fit neatly into your code. And that is the overall reason for the variances that are being requested, and the interpretations that are being requested. So, as was noted at the top, we need variances for side setback, total side setback, building coverage, distance between buildings, distance between the driveway, refuse areas and buildings, uh, and, uh, the, um, that last one, the distance between driveway, refuse areas and buildings, is again, your code contemplates an apartment building. Okay, and so, it, and it contemplates that there's, the, a dumpster somewhere, okay? Uh, it contemplates that there's a separate parking area somewhere. Here, we're talking about individual trash cans for each unit, just like in front of a single-family house, we're talking about a driveway in front of each unit, just like a single-family house. And so, we can't meet, uh, the requirements that are in your code, uh, for, uh, apartment buildings. Uh, the, the distance between the buildings actually shows up only, uh, with respect to a, a few of the buildings, um, where are we? Number seventy-nine, eighty, and eighty-one, that are down near the southwest, uh, community road. And so, we're shy on those, everything else, uh, we meet the distance requirements. Again, uh, side setback, building cover, total side setback, building coverage, again, that is, and with respect to the fact that we are squashing things down, okay? We are not building, uh, building up three stories, okay, having everything together, and everybody chip-chip by jow. And so, we're spreading out, and because we're spreading out, okay, that requires, uh, a, a variance for the, for building coverage.
Do you have a refereeing, sorry, do you have a visual refereeing that you can pull up?
Of the building itself? I, somewhere in here, I do, um, tell you what, I'll be, uh, when the public hearing is on, I'll, I'll, I'll pitch to my boss, and I'll pitch to someone.
I have to.
I know we have one, I don't know if I've got a question. Uh, we also are asking for some interpretations, because we're not sure about this. One of, one of the, what I discussed already is the, uh, the central refuse area. Uh, if you give an interpretation that we don't have to have a set of central refuse area, then we don't need that variance. So, it's, it's an alternative request.
Uh, do you agree that? Inspector?
Yes.
He wants interpretation of some sort.
Well, the interpretation we're asking for is from you.
We've made an interpretation, he's asking it from you.
Correct. We're appealing, we're appealing Mr. Zumo's interpretation here.
Which was what?
I didn't determine it, it's the code that says that.
That what?
Yeah.
Should be central, or should be?
The, the code does say central.
So, it's designed as a work.
Sorry?
Talking about, what should be central? Refuge.
Gar, the garbage.
Whereas he's trying to make it look like individual housing, therefore he wants that to be central.
Right, and if you feel that it's more appropriate to grant a variance to that effect, that's fine. Uh, where we're asking for the alternative, because we just want to cover, cover the bases. Uh, similarly, with respect to location, drive, sorry?
Concerned with this question very much. If there's a more central location, every house has its own.
Do you want it to be privately?
Sorry?
You don't say that way, then.
So, it's a way for the.
I, I don't know if we're, I don't know if we've decided on a H O A or condo, uh, or rental, actually, uh, but, um, it's going, there's going to be a central governing regime.
Fifty-nine and older?
Fifty-five and older. That's required by the code, required, required by the regulations. Still, we'll see. Tomorrow, there may not be any regulations announced.
But the front story is still high, so.
The, the last interpretation we need, uh, there was a question I've got to read. I'm sorry.
It'd be nice if you had a drink.
So, as you can see, we want to maintain that kind of single-family residential deal.
Yeah, we're asking us in front of each house is a lot more logical, I think, if we're trying to appear more as individual homes.
Also, another thing, if you take the guy that lives in that corner, and you want him to walk a hundred and fifty feet to the garbage, I mean, come on. a hundred and fifty feet to the garbage, I mean, come on.
And his sixties.
I know, but.
About fifty-five to sixty.
Whatever.
Yeah, these tend to skew much older than that. But, but again, let me, let me, first of all, this is not Mr. Zumo's interpretation that we are challenging, Mr. Zumo was correct, your code says what it says.
So we can grant variance.
We're asking for, for your interpretation of the code or variance. Similarly, with the driveways, your code does say that, um, it's, uh, it, to my mind, it's not entirely clear, but again, either an interpretation or a variance for the location of the driveways, uh, again, the driveways are immediately adjacent to the, to the units.
And what would the code say?
The code talks about central is parking.
Yeah, it contemplates that. Um, and then there was a question that had been raised, not formally, uh, whether or not there was additional parking needed for the community room. It's our position that the community room is an accessory use to the project, it is intended for the use of the residents, it is not open to the public. Uh, and so we have ample parking available for the residents and for their guests. Uh, and.
Where is this parking?
Well, there's parking, there's parking scattered throughout.
Yeah, this, so every, every driveway that accommodates two cars for the residential units. Then there's overflow visitor parking here, overflow visitor parking here.
You said that before.
Yeah, and then each one of the community areas has its own designated parking. So as Mr. Mail indicated, if there's ample parking here, if this is really, this is intended for the community, there's sidewalks along all the roads so people can park at their house, stay at their house, and then walk either community room or by there.
What was he requesting, was it, was being requested by the community? Parking space.
I think it's additional parking is beyond our check.
Yeah, I see, uh, what we've, what we have provided, we have provided two parking spaces per unit, in addition. In addition, those parking areas that are scattered throughout provide an additional fifty-three parking spaces. Uh, as noted in the narrative, uh, if you assume three passengers per vehicle, that might come, you know, to, to visit family or, or, you know, perhaps there's a small party in, in more community rooms, uh, fifty-three parking spaces per vehicle can accommodate a hundred and fifty-nine visitors. What do you think that's happening? Okay? Um, so that, that's the discussion, really, with respect to the variances and the interpretations. Uh, if the board wants, uh, wants to ask questions at this point, that's fine, otherwise, uh, we do have a, uh, a concern with various consultant reports that you've received, including, uh, but not limited to, the Rockland County Planning Department, uh, where we're going to ask them for an override, uh, you received a letter to that effect from me, uh, we've also received correspondence from your fire inspector, uh, and from the Rockland County Highway Department, uh, and we have some significant difficulties with both of those letters.
You're more concerned about the fire department?
Yeah. So are we, because we've thought the water is strange stuff in that.
And we, and I can respond to two things, so just to be brief, the Rockland County Highway Department, their letter requested traffic study, and they voiced concerns about the impact on the project, they also requested a turn lane into the project study. And that's after they authored the letter, was fully engaged with the TIS that we prepared. So it sort of perplexes us that you request a study that he knew we were prepared, he was given copies of the report, um, it's sort of unusual.
That's not that he participated in defining the scope of.
Right.
It's almost, it's almost as if he forgot that he ever saw the thing.
Yeah. So we'll continue to coordinate with, with, with Rockland County Highway. The one thing we want to point out is, in the recent letter, they made mention of their request for a turn lane on Saddle River Road into the project. Now, our traffic study indicated there was absolutely no warrant for such an improvement. And that's based on the project's demands, the peak hour from the project as well as background growth, as well as other projects within the planning, planning area that we studied. I mean, we extended pretty far from the project and analyzed multiple intersections that this, this project may or may not impact, it does not impact any intersections within a certain radius of the.
Do you have an engineer of self-stay?
Absolutely, oh yeah. Our traffic impact study that was contained within the EIS clearly states that the project has no impacts on the local road network.
That's high. And with respect, okay, that letter had nothing to do with the variances that were suggested here.
No, absolutely. Now, to go on to the fire inspector's comments, he had three comments, and it seemed to allude to that he wanted further consultation from your village engineer, I believe in this case it was Mr. Fusco. Two of them were really, I think, really inconsequential, maybe it was asking for information or clarification, and I'll briefly talk about it. He was talking about two of the standards that we utilized to develop the needed fire flow for the project. And he questioned whether it accounted for sprinkler flow. Well, the two standards really are functionally independent. One defines the needed fire flow, the volume and rate and the pressure in which you need to fight an incident in your town, that's one standard. And if you have sprinklers in your building, you're allowed to reduce the needed fire flow, which is the, the volume of water to fight a fire. And then there was another standard that he wondered if it includes sprinklers. Has nothing to do with sprinklers, it has to do with the means and methods in which you design your water distribution system. So that answers his first question. His next question had to do with hydrant flow data from Veolia and whether that included sprinkler flows. Hydrant flow data has nothing to do with sprinkler flows, that's just an instantaneous reading within the distribution system of what's the pressure at this hydrant, we take that data, and then we develop a model. So it has nothing to do with it.
And again, neither of those two questions have anything to do with the variances that we're looking for.
Okay, the third one, the third one, the third one is, but to go to those two points to, to sort of close that out, again, we did a full water report that was done as part of the EIS. It showed clearly that the existing water distribution system has more than adequate capacity to meet the normal use water, showers, drinking, as well as fighting a fire at the, at the site, well beyond what was required.
And if those weren't satisfactory, then neither the planning board nor the board of trustees would have issued favorable findings.
So the bottom line is that it does not belong here, as we say, we'll deal with the variances.
Right.
But we cannot override a fire department, uh, issue, we can't override a highway department.
We're not, we're not asking, we're not asking you to. We're asking you to strictly deal with zoning issues, but we do need to deal with the third issue that the fire inspector brought up.
Right.
Because that does go, that does go to building separation, there are two, there are two issues with respect, there are two laws, two sets of laws that relate to building separation. The first is your zoning code. Your zoning code says you have to, have to have fifty feet between buildings, okay? Cut and dry, doesn't matter what the buildings look like, doesn't matter, you know, how they built, cut and dry, your zoning code says fifty feet, and that is the variance that we are asking for. The second code is the Uniform Fire Safety and Building Code. That's much more complicated, and that's what Mr., uh, that's, that's what the fire inspector is, and you have nothing to do with that, by the way. You have nothing to do with that, but it's out there and we need to respond to it, and so that's, that's what.
Again, it's not, doesn't belong here.
Yeah, we just want to explain it for, for the benefit of the public, if you will.
Right, so the, the fire inspector's comments references a fifty-foot separation that is in the New York State Code without referencing a section of the Uniform Code. We have done an exhaustive search of the Uniform Code, we have consulted with other code enforcement officials that we have assisted. The project architect has looked at the code, there is no such provision in the Building Code, the Uniform Code, relative to a fifty-foot separation. Frankly, we think he.
Who brought it up?
Your, your fire inspector. We frankly believe that was confused between the New York State Building Code, the Uniform Code, and your zoning code. I think there was just maybe a confusion on wording and terminology. Now, to get to the Uniform Fire Code.
Wait a minute. Did it comment on that?
Nope. Not the fire inspector.
Who was?
Ate Nish.
Where is it?
Home sleeping. So, so, so again, as Mr. Manuel indicated, we, we, we are not seeking.
Do we have anything in writing?
We have the letter that he's referring to.
Right.
Do you have fire hydrants on the property?
We have multiple fires on the property.
Been a while since I've had one. But we have fire hydrants on the wider project, you have to enter into it with open access and with the load. And, uh, basically, you have to take them, give them to the company first.
Yeah, that's our mission.
Yeah, that's our mission. Yeah, the water mains and the height.
Postpono.
The water mains, we turn over Veolia B business, so they may have full access to the property.
Yeah, well, this is not a, it's not a discussion for tonight, because it has nothing to do with the variance. But just, just to get the focus back on what we're talking about, we are asking for variance through the zoning code, okay? We contend that there is no issue with the, with the state code, okay? We'll deal with that state code another time, that should not have an impact on what this board does. Uh, this board can't grant variances from the state code, uh, you've probably been told that before, not that I'm telling you right now, you have no authority over the state code, okay? You obviously have authority over the zoning code, so that is what we're asking for is that, it is your fire inspector who conflated the state code with your zoning code with respect to building separation.
His intentions are now and in the future that this project does not need nor will be seeking any variances from the building code, state code.
I'd like to make, morning. Do you have any questions?
Not at this point.
Good.
I actually don't. Thank you, sir.
The, the one last thing I'd like to mention is we do have a letter from a resident, uh, the Goldmans, they have made specific requests about fencing, about additional landscaping, and living on work hours, and the applicant has no problem applying to these requests.
Which side is that? Which side do you look?
Six foot bottom part of the surface.
Remember on Hill Point Trail?
I'm assuming it's.
Back there.
On this side.
Yeah.
On the side of the river.
Yeah, screen out probably. Screen out probably.
Landscape and curvy solutions.
Down the side.
Yeah, they're, they're. They're relative remote, you know what?
We don't have a, we don't have a problem with it.
This side, you gonna screen?
No, the other side.
No, it's the other side.
This side, you gonna screen?
Oh yes, of course, yeah, that, and, and the screening wall, that, that end, that north side, where we are running, single-family homes, I think there's three of them up there, uh, we will heavily landscape and we'll work that out with the planning board. Now, we do have plans in, I think the planning board on that is talked, was talked about, I believe in the DEIS, we will absolutely prepare a screening up there.
Yeah, we, we, in the EIS, that was one of the points that we had to offer mitigation to screen off that northern side, yeah.
One of the first, frankly, one of the first things in our turnover view, going back now a couple of years, we took one look at that, we said, okay, we gotta make sure we put screening up there.
There's no way you can put more parking? Try it.
We can put more parking, first of all, we don't, we don't feel we need more parking. Uh, more parking means more pavement.
Could I make the motion to open the public hearing?
Sure.
For the favor?
All right.
Um, for those of the public here, if you want to call your name, you can come up and sit to the board your three minutes, and I'll sign you. And the first person on the list is Ron Robery. And you have to address the board.
My name is Ron Robery. I've been living on Long Island Drive for forty-eight years. My house is probably closest to the, um, building area as you can possibly get. It would be nice if, uh, you know, the residents got a chance to look at what's proposed. My main concern at this point, and I live on a dead-end street. Seven houses and four parts of hell to get that close, because there was an access at one time going back about thirty years to Blue Room. We had buses, cars, people, parked road, dead end, pretty much all the way up to the top, right by Saddle River Road. And getting in day and evening was almost untenable. For those of you who know the area, Saddle River Road is a one-lane road in each direction. And when the town pool was in operation in the summertime, that was difficult enough to get in and out of your side street. When a rabbi was buried up on the top of hillside a couple of years back, it was worse than untenable. There was phalanx of cars, people walking on both sides of that street with buses, cars going up and down that road doing thirty to forty miles an hour. I can only imagine what an ingress and an egress on this proposed property is going to do to Saddle River Road. Anybody who lives in that area knows what it's like to get to fifty-nine on that road at any time between seven and ten AM, at any time from three to five or three to six PM. It's, it's a nightmare. I don't know much about the aquifers, or when there was colleges that were supposed to be built up on the top of hillside, the wall table at the bottom of the hill, people on that street are on webs. People on the top of the hill had to drill down three hundred, twenty-five, three hundred and fifty feet to tap into the aquifer to get water to the houses. Now, that was shot down, not by me, not by the neighbors, nor by the water company. I can only imagine what the water was going to be like down in that valley, because the last time I looked, when they built the, the two large pools that are now covered, and the one pool that is open to free air, they brought water trucks down here to fill those pools. This many houses, I think, I think the newsletter said a hundred and five units? There's, uh, there's quite a lot to be discussed, and the limited amount of time that we got these notifications, for that, absolutely no diagram.
My time is up, sir.
Okay, my time is up. Uh, by the way, I know what General Costa feels, felt like it a little big one. That one's a free one.
John Mada, can't read it. Better off, so thank you. Fourteen years late.
Thank you for taking my time here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I just have a couple of issues. One is environmental. The map that they show here looks like, I'm assuming that the top is north and the bottom is south.
You're right.
Indicates that they're going to be building all of these townhouses on the west side of, of Saddle River, on the west side of the river.
No.
East side of the river. On the east side of the river.
Up, up, the opposite side of the river.
Well, then the map is upside down. Now, because I live on the, on west, west side of the river, that's north, I live on that side.
You live on the east side. Let's move on the west.
I live on the west side of Saddle River. Iroquois Trail.
Yep.
Iroquois Trail is off the map on the, to the left. Yeah, I understand, but Saddle River runs through my backyard, so.
Oh, the Saddle River, yes, we, yes.
Saddle River.
The river.
The river.
Yes, sorry. The, the river runs through your backyard and also runs through our backyard, where the other side.
For me, this map looks upside down, but that's, that's a different problem. It's an environment, environmentally sensitive area, it's prone to flooding, the river is.
The river, as I said, goes right through my backyard, so I see how much flooding there is there in torrential rains. In the spring and in the winter. So that's one of my concerns. I don't know who did the environmental studies, but it seems to me like they didn't really take into account the amount of rain that can go through that river at its headwaters during the spring or fall rains. So that's one issue. Number two, you're saying that you're going to build a hundred and five units and that it will have no traffic impact. I live on South Munce, off of South Muncey Road. Iroquois Trail goes up to South Muncey Road. And South Muncey Road right now during high-traffic hours, even at this date, is terrible. There's traffic back all the way up to New County Road and beyond. So I can't imagine how building a hundred and five units and let's say at least fifty of those units are going to have automobiles. That is going to affect traffic. There is no question that it's going to have an environmental impact on traffic. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have several concerns. I feel there should be no variances permitted with the distance from the properties. For one, you have, I saw on the map, one of the community groups is very close to the back of the property, which would be very close to myself and my neighbors. I'm concerned about noise levels. Also, right now even, there is security lighting that at night, when there's no leaves on the trees, it comes into my windows from there. I go out, or my daughters go out to take the dogs out at night, and it actually is so bright, it blinds us. And I'm also concerned about flooding on South Muncey Road. You put all that pavement and buildings there, where's that water going? Bottom of South Muncey Road floods to the point where it closes the way it is now. And you also have the issue with the sewer. The sewer smells so bad, the way it is now. You're going to add all these? And my understanding is they're calling it two bedrooms for fifty-five and up, and somebody had said it also allows adult children. Plus, you're having something called a den and a study also that sounds like four bedrooms to me. What, just because it doesn't have a closet? And on top of that, the traffic is heavy, as my neighbors have mentioned, enough as it is. You're saying fifty-five and up, you're acting like those people aren't driving. Fifty-five, they're not retired. They're still out working. You have adult family members living there, but also they're driving during peak hours if they're going to work. You know, and I'm wondering, you know, how that's going to be resolved. And I'm assuming that you are also aware of the treaty with the indigenous people, that they are allowed to have access to the Saddle River for their own purposes, ceremonial or otherwise. So, yeah, there's a treaty for that. So look it up, I'm going to send it to you, so just, you know.
I want to see that.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I was hoping my daughter would be here with it. She was giving me, I'll send it. Thank you. That's it, that's it.
What kind of, they can hunt over there?
Huh?
They can hunt over there? I got about three dozen deer on my property that can hunt.
Joanne Patrick?
Hey, I'm Joanne Patrick. I live in sixty South Muncey Road. Properties in my backyard. No, it's in my back. What I want to know is, it's covered a lot. I don't think I'm going to demand, sir, as usual, but fifty-five and older, there's plenty of those in Florida. Grandchildren are allowed to visit for, I believe, two weeks. What are you, are they going to have stipulations here? Are they going to be, all children live in here? Will there be school buses all through here? That's what I want to know. I've had enough of the school buses, they're loud. They come eleven o'clock at night. That's my complaint. Thanks.
Yoel Wertzberger?
Yoel Wertzberger, Five Star School. I live right across the street of the development. I've been here for ten years. I think it's, I think it's a welcome, you know, that we're going to have a rather fifty-five and older than have a full development. It's going to happen regardless. Someone else is going to buy it two years from now. We built, you know, housing over there. Buses is definitely going to be lighter from the traffic. Right now, we also have bus traffic over there. It's been there for years in terms of bus traffic with the vacan being over there. So I think it's good for the community, and I believe that they're going to add to the community. And I trust the developer has been attentive to anything that we ask for in terms, past few years that they've been there to help us out, make sure that, you know, we don't have any problems with the kids and whatnot. They've always been a part of it.
So I would like to hear. Ira. Did you ever look into, like, the town owner? Like, do you know how they acquired?
The town owned what?
That property.
This property? No. This is Blue River Vacan.
I thought the town.
No.
Is there a man on the?
So was it?
Alive.
Good. Four decades. I have a very good friend who went there as a child. And he's older than I am.
Yep.
Ancient times. Took attendance on fires.
No, just wanted to make sure that.
Hundred percent.
That if the town owns it.
There's town-owned property surrounding it, but not just.
Or anybody else that lives around.
That is the last person that signed up.
The roads are one-way roads or two-way? The roads and the?
These are all two-way roads.
Two-way roads. Now, why, now then?
Twenty-four, in some areas, they, I believe they increased to twenty-six, but predominantly twenty-four.
Even between the houses, like road D roads?
Yes.
Everything's two-way.
No, these are all two-way.
Mr. Chia?
Yeah.
Have a question.
Please, go ahead.
The attorney, Mr. Emanuel? What is, what are the stipulations for, in this zone, for over fifty-five for senior housing? Principal owner, I assume, would have to be over fifty-five. Is that the only stipulation?
Actually, I don't have it in front of me, but I'll defer to Mr. Zuma on that. You're welcome.
Mr. Zuma.
That's one of the stipulations, is that they have, the principal owner has to be over fifty-five and he has to prove it. So they have the supply evidence to.
The principal has to be over fifty-five.
The village in this case.
He needs to live there, he's not allowed to rent it out?
No.
No.
That's an important question.
And cannot have school-aged children living there, visiting, obviously. But you cannot have school-aged children living there. Some likelihood of buses going in and out of there on a regular basis approaches zero.
Okay.
Anybody else sign up?
Phil Dollarcheck could move there with his twenty-four-year-old daughter.
Yeah. I think so, yeah. Yeah.
You have to address the board, not me.
I do. Over curly, guys. You stipulate over fifty-five. I'm seventy-seven.
Okay.
I have kids that come over my house who have kids. I'm sure that some of the individuals that are going to be occupying this space are going to have children that still live with them.
Yeah, but they say that they cannot do that.
How could you tell a husband and wife that has children, maybe of college age, that come home, that they can't come home to something here?
Six months?
Because they're not fifty-five? Does it stipulate that it's fifty-five with no kids?
This is what he said. This is what Inspector said.
And it's tough to hear back there because it must have had a bad electrician, because I don't think your microphones are working. But my personal opinion is, there's a lot of holes in this that none of us know anything about. And it would be nice if we could see it laid out someplace. Here, this is the first time I've even had a chance to look at it.
Do you understand, this is the first chance that all of us have had to look at this?
This is the first?
No, actually, no. This has been in front of the planning board. I think that's why I'm not here.
I understand what you're saying, but like I said, there's a lot of holes in it.
Yes, but it was addressed many times, I believe, in front of the planning board.
In the south, west corner of that, there's a lake. And around that.
I can hear one person at a time.
Right.
Ira?
Okay. We have been working on this since, what exactly when? July of twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, has a big function to plan.
We have been in front of the pining board. First pining board meeting was May of twenty-twenty-four. Okay, there were public notices that were sent out in accordance with the secret requirements. There was publication that was made, there were postings here at Village Hall. I'm sure that it was, I know that it was on the village's website. So although, you know, they may not have gotten an individual mailing. Yeah, they may not have gotten individual mailings. Okay, this has been going on in public ever since May of twenty-twenty-four, so over a year. Okay, we've had meetings before the pining board, we've had meetings before the board of trustees, we are now coming in front of you. As far as the fifty-five and older is concerned, that is a matter of your zoning code, which reflects the Housing and Urban Development Department, federal Housing and Urban Development Department regulations under the Fair Housing Act. Okay? We can't change it, you can't change it, only the feds can do it.
Very well. Anybody else signed up?
No.
Good, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
No, no, no.
No? So what do we do now?
Not even close.
Wow.
We, it appeared before the board for the first time. Not a single letter has been read.
No, let's read the letters.
It.
It's not even ten o'clock, let's read the letters.
What letters do you want to read?
The ones that we always do when we get letters from agencies and.
Go ahead.
Ira?
Let's go. Let's go through the letters. Not even a question. Who's going to, who's going to read through it?
Do you want me to read the letters into the record?
You want to read them from data, or the letter?
Well, I think the one thing you definitely have to go through is the G M L, but the other letters.
G M L we have to go through.
Yeah, but for the record, we have Rockland County Environmental Health dated August twelfth. Rockland County Sewer dated July twenty-third. You have the fire inspector letter that we discussed July twenty-fourth. Rockland County Highway Department July sixteen. Town of Ramapo, D P W, July twenty-fourth. Did I say Ira?
Yes.
Yes. And then we have the G M L dated August seventh. And then there's a letter from Mr. Emanuel regarding the.
If you close the public hearing, you cannot receive new documents. The council won't have an opportunity to review your question.
Good. So, no. I think then what we should do is notify the public that all these letters are available online. And let them have a look at it if they wish.
Just so you're aware, for zoning, the adjacent and abutting properties get notified. And this is the first time they're in front of zoning. When they did the D E I S, it wasn't individual lines. As Ira pointed out, it was on the village website, it was in front of my calendar, the normal postings. And it was email blasted, but unless you were signed up for those email blasts or looked at all these things, you wouldn't have known that it was in front of the planning board. It has to still go in front of the planning board for a public hearing on site plan and special plan. It has not done that.
That's correct. By the way, I believe that individual notices were sent out for the board of trustees.
That I can't answer.
That, that's not due.
Yeah, I understand that. But I believe that that would have been the first notification for individuals.
Yeah, and I don't handle that, those things.
Understood.
Yeah. And it also has to go to Architectural Review Committee, that hasn't even done that.
Yeah, so this is not the end of the road by any means.
So then why don't we? How many letters do you think we have?
Just the G M L we need to go through.
No, we need to.
You want me to go through here and then you want to come up?
I will go through the G M L.
Who has real quick?
This is the, this is the applicant representative.
Hi, Joseph Bruce. I'm the representative of that, we're going to talk for about a second. I just want to mention that we did a tremendous effort to reach out to almost every single neighbor around the property. We met with all the neighbors that actually got a phone call. We spent a lot of time sitting down, showing them the plans. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, he's the only one I didn't. I said almost all of them.
You didn't mean with me.
One second, I got, I'm not sure.
I think they had nothing. Doesn't matter. It's not a huge matter.
I did actually reach out to the neighbor on Long Meadow about a year ago, I knocked in.
Okay, it's not important. It's not going to change anything. We have to go through the letters.
I was just going to say that I should.
You said, okay. Continue, Ira, let's go through the G M L.
Do you want to go through the G M L? Sure. The G M L. All right, I'll read it. You received the G M L dated August seventh. We responded August eleventh in writing.
I read through that, but put it in there.
Okay. Okay, I'm glad I've got a cough drop. The county planning department recommended modifications. And this is what they said. The recently released Rockland County Housing Needs Assessment has documented the extent and impact. And actually, let me take the microphone so I don't get a shout. Although I can easily make myself heard. The recently released Rockland County Housing Needs Assessment, H N A, has documented the extent and impact of the lack of affordable housing in Rockland County. Noting that Rockland County has the highest percentage of cost-burdened households in the region. The H N A also notes that the percentage of homes in Rockland County that are single-family is greater than that of New York State and all other communities in the region, except for Orange and Nassau Counties. One of several recommendations in the H N A towards alleviating the high cost of housing is the encouragement of different levels of residential densities such as townhouse developments. This department encourages efforts to create additional housing opportunities for Rockland County residents and was supportive of the signing of the RSA Joverley District at this site when such application was submitted to us in May twenty-twenty-five. However, we are concerned that the scale and density of the proposed development will result in significant land use impacts, particularly given the environmental constraints of the site. To that end, our department previously issued a disapproval of the site plan application when we reviewed it in May twenty-twenty-four. We stand by that disapproval and believe the density and number of units should be reduced to better protect sensitive environmental features found on the western portion of the site. Saddle River County Regulate the Stream, the large wetland area, and the hundred-year flood bank. A buffer around the wetlands should be provided to better help these features. Our department offers the following comments regarding the variance application before us at this time. If I may, I'd like to respond in line.
Please.
Okay. First of all, I'm not sure if the department is recommending modifications or if it's actually disapproving, because it seems to be talking about both things at once.
Saying that they needed them, they're disapproving.
Yeah, exactly. The department's disapproval was based upon a letter from May twenty-twenty-four. That letter was issued before any of the environmental review. As I mentioned earlier, we first started. Okay, as I mentioned earlier, we first started the planning with them. Very first, uh, board meeting we attended was in May of twenty twenty-four. You know what happened at that meeting? Okay, the planning board declared that it was a type-one action and issued a positive declaration. So at the time for the May twenty, uh, at the time that the prior county letter was issued, there was nothing. All they had was a map. Okay. They don't acknowledge the DEIS, they don't acknowledge the FBIIS, they don't acknowledge the planning board's findings. They don't acknowledge the, uh, Board of Trustees' findings. Okay, they don't acknowledge the fact that they were an interested agency and they received every single piece of paper involved in the environmental impact statement process. Every one. In fact, they participated in the environmental impact statement process. So where they come off saying that we, we haven't taken into account, I have no idea. And by the way, as we mentioned before, okay, uh, they're concerned about the, uh, about, you know, the density of development. We are developing at one-third of what your code would otherwise allow. Okay. Uh, there's also, you know, they talk about a large wetland area. There is no large wetland area. There's a wetland area up north, uh, off the northwest portion of the site. We're nowhere near it in terms of development. They talk about buffer, we're providing that buffer. Okay? No development is proposed within a hundred feet of top of bank of the Saddle River. Okay? What that means is that we don't even need a permit from the county drainage agency, because we're not interfering with their jurisdiction. So I don't know what county planning department is talking about with respect to environmental impacts. Frankly, I don't think they do lie to people. So to the, to the extent, to the extent that there's a disapproval, we ask that you override that disapproval. Okay? Comment number one. And, and you've heard this one many, many times. New developments, especially one that requires a zone change to allow to propose to use, must comply with the applicable bulk standards. While a new construction that does not comply with the applicable bulk standards can set an undesirable land use precedent and result in the overutilization of individual sites. The proposed building coverage exceeds the permitted maximum by thirty-seven percent. The site setback, total site setback and side yard are all forty percent sufficient. The ability of the existing infrastructure to accommodate increase for residential density and building coverage, if county-wide concerned, must be evaluated. The village must consider the cumulative and community impacts of permitting such development while evaluating the requested variances. The number of units must be reduced so that the development that complies with zoning standards is achieved. So at one point, they say you have to consider it, and then they say you have to reduce it. Okay, so again, they're speaking out of both sides of their mouth. And again, as we discussed up at the top, the concept that we have here is different from what your code requires and what your code contemplates. And that is the reason for the coverage, uh, and setback, uh, variances that we need. Okay, to then inject, as they do, that we have too much density is just demonstrably false. Said this before.
At the same time, when they say that they want to have.
Right, and we're one-third of the density that's allowed. So we ask that be overruled. By the way, they made the same comment to the Board of Trustees and the Board of Trustees overruled it as well. So we ask that comment number one be overruled. The remaining comments are fairly standard comments, and if, if it's okay with the board, I'll just paraphrase them, um, because it is running over late. Uh, address comments made by the County Highway Department in their letter, particular July sixteen. Saddle River, uh, is a county regulation stream. Review must be obtained by the County Drainage Agency. Uh, comply with comments from the County Health, Department of Health in May thirtieth letter. Uh, comply with comments made by Rockland County Sewer District in their July twenty-three letter. Uh, refer to Nick with Furbamander from the village of Chestnut Ridge, because they're within five hundred feet. They're right across the street on Saddle River Road. Um, multiple dwellings must, must register and obtain a multiple dwelling rental certificate. Uh, that's, that's a post-final matter, that's actually a post-construction matter. Okay, they always put that in. It has actually nothing to do with what you're talking, what we're talking about here. It has actually nothing to do with what we're talking about at the planning board or at the Board of Trustees. If these are rentals, then of course we will register.
But they're not rented, you're saying?
Uh, they're, I believe they're intended to be ownership. But if they're rentals, then hopefully, then hopefully, then well.
Uh, let's ask the.
They're going to be ownership, they're going to be owned. So there we go.
Get rid of that.
Get rid of that completely. Um, down to number eight. If, uh, if you override, you have to state your reasons and you have to, uh, and you have to file a report of the override with Commissioner of Planning. Uh, and number nine is there's, also there's standard, uh, that, um, when we go and get a county permit, we have to file a certificate with respect to any action to take it to override. So we would ask, um, the GML that you override the disapproval if, in fact, it is a disapproval. And I think that for purposes of being conservative, we should treat it as one. And override item number one, which directs us to, uh, to reduce the number of units.
Very well, I think we'll adjourn the meeting for tonight, we'll get a second.
Uh, to be certain, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
To be certain?
Next thing.
Which is what?
September.
Eleven, and we may want to adopt the time.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, we have fifty-one church, home, senior.
Another.
Continued, and prior to that, we have two and three classes, so we have those two. I also, well, it doesn't matter because this is continued, I have.
So they'll be yours first?
No, they would be third.
They'll be third.
They would be third. Um, and that leaving date is Thursday, September eleventh.
Okay. Well, we have a choice, we have to adjourn this. This is getting complicated. And, uh, you'll have a second.
I'll second.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
You remember, Mr. Commander.
Part?
Your election, we signed our election, says, let's start off this election.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing here.
I just need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
That's it.
I didn't, I didn't.
I'm making motion to adjourn the meeting.
I, I can't hear.
Second. Second. Thank you, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.